Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, April 21st, 2014.
Go move.
Motion by Ammons.
I'll second.
Seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any. So we'll move on to petitions and communications, and I would like to start off with a proclamation, and this has to do with National Bike to School Day. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine; and whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution; and whereas community members and leaders should make a plan to make changes to enable children to safely bicycle and walk in our community; and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to evaluate bicycling and walking conditions in their communities, now therefore I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2014, as National Bike to School Day in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day. And we have our representative.
And while the mayor's up and giving that to Cynthia, I'd like to point out that Saturday, May 10th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., we will have a bicycle rodeo for kids that will include bicycle skill stations, safety information, helmet sales, and helmet fittings in the lot south of the farmer's market.
Okay, Cynthia Hoyle is here on behalf of Bike to School Day and Bike to School Week, or what?
It's Bike Month.
Bike Month.
And I wanted to invite all of you, you can join us. Most of the schools in Urbana are going to be having children and parents biking to school this Wednesday, so feel free to join them at the bike racks. I was hoping we would have some of our younger bicyclists here tonight, but nobody was able to join me. I'm not nearly as much fun as they are. But I wanted to invite you all to do that, and thank you for all of the support you've provided to our programming. The City of Urbana has been a huge support and is a lot to credit for the progress that we've made in Urbana, and we really appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation.
Well, I think you're the person that's really done a lot of the work around here on this whole issue, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thanks.
So thank you very much, Cynthia.
Okay, we have people who have filled out cards that would like to speak.
Mayor? Yes, Diane?
There's one correction to the agenda.
Oh, to the agenda?
Yeah, is it too late?
No, no, go ahead.
Item H actually should not, is not ready to be discussed yet. That was the amended agreement for UC2B.
We'll just delete item H then. Karletta Donaldson?
It's Karletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookings Drive in Urbana. And just to add to the, don't feel bad if on Wednesday you can't bike to work or school because you don't have a bike. On Thursday, the Urbana Police Department will be giving away bikes that it's collected in the last several months. So that's from 10:00 to noon at the Public Works Building at 704 South Glover in Urbana. It looks like they have about 100 bikes to give away, so if you don't have a bike. One thing that has not been mentioned about the tasers, and not noted as an option, is that police work has changed, like any other profession, job, statute, law, and life. Things change, and we must change accordingly. We have seen all over the world what tasers do to the mentally ill and the not-so-mentally-ill. I, like others, need more information and need to see more, and I do thank Chief Connolly for a packet. I started to read it, I haven't gone all the way through it, but I do appreciate it, and will make sure that I go through, and, Mark, I do have a few questions on that as well that I'll get out. But the officer, Urbana officers are saying tasing, and then there's no Plan B. So if tasers don't pass, what happens at that point? I hope this doesn't become too political, like so much that has been going on since I've been sitting here for two years, and people really research, is there someone in your family or circle of friends with a mental illness? Is there someone in your family or circle of friends who is a felon? No need to answer, I've already researched some of this, but would you really want your loved one, friend, or even yourself to be tased? Now, I know that we're talking about tasers just in general, but when it was presented to the UCAT, and that's the Urbana Community Advisory Team, not UCAP, but UCAT, U-C-A-T, it was mentioned, and there were a few people that worked with the mentally ill that were at that meeting, but it was mentioned that they need another tool in dealing with our mental ill community. So instead of separating mental ill from not mentally ill, let's just really get down to working with the entire community, not just those who are mentally ill. We just, we need to be able to work in peace. Again, police work has changed, so there may need to be an adjustment for that change. Experience may not be enough. Education does not hurt anyone, but tasing certainly does. Again, I had the opportunity to take the Civilian Police Academy last year, and the subject on tasers. I've known one of the volunteers for tasing for many, many years, and to see him volunteering to have these electrical bolts sent through his body showed me a few things. If you continue to behave erratically, knowing what happens, what could happen to you, how you feel during and after, something really has to be wrong with you mentally. It's just that simple, if you see a taser coming towards you and you continue doing what you're doing. If you're a police officer and don't believe that police work has changed, might be a consideration for a career change. And I know it was mentioned that, you know, police officers are not social workers. Well, it might not hurt for them to maybe get a certificate. I know that Community Elements works with the police officers to train them to deal with mental illness, so maybe a little bit more training would be appropriate in this case as well. Now, as NAMI suggests, all officers should have this training because police work is changing, and there may not be time to deploy the crisis intervention team. So police officers do need to be ready. Now, NAMI's approach to tasing is not specific, but they do say in their platform, and I do paraphrase, "If used properly and with training," I guess it seems to be okay. I'm still researching a little bit more on that. And for those that may have questions of Community Elements, they have an open house this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 801 North Walnut at their new facility, and I'm sure they'll be willing to discuss or answer any questions that you may have about that as well.
You have one minute.
Okay. My final point on the tasers is that there probably should be a community forum or town hall meeting to also get people's views on that as well. Now, I'd like to also be on the committee to be notified. I know they said that with the tasers, there's cameras. I'd like to be on a committee to be notified when that taser has been, when a taser has been used, if it does go through, and to be able to monitor and look at to see if it was used properly. I don't think it should just be one-sided as far as reviewing that. I know the chief, some of the specifics haven't been worked out, they're just waiting to be able to go through with the funding, or request for funding. Again, there should be a town hall meeting. I do have a few questions of elected officials in front of me. The bedroom community concept, some of you may not have heard about that, but in Urbana years ago was that bedroom community as far as businesses. If I might have a few more minutes?
Yeah, I'll move. A couple minutes.
Thank you. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but in listening to Mike Madigan, I do agree, there's so much business going on in Champaign, and we don't have the businesses and their taxes to absorb what's going on and affecting taxpayers in Urbana. So that might be something that we need to consider as far as getting more businesses in Urbana. Tom Carino, of course, we hate to see him go at the end of the month, he helped me in my last job and has always answered any questions I've had. But one thing that I had asked of him previously, and I hope that this is addressed, as far as getting new businesses in Urbana, sometimes you go out, sometimes you wait on people to call. I don't think with a lot of the things that are going on in Urbana, people will just be calling frantically trying to get businesses here in Urbana. So possibly the next person that is hired, they need to be more aggressive in getting out to get more businesses in Urbana. And my final point, the late Whitney Young was here in Champaign, Urbana 50 years ago, and one of his statements was, "The problem with Champaign County is that they don't recognize they have a problem." That's something to think about, because we have a lot of things, and as people are opening up their tax bills today, a lot of people are just not very happy at what they see. So we do need to be more aggressive on getting more businesses here. And my final question to the mayor, you have a chief of staff who shares, I believe, an administrative assistant with another position, is that correct?
I guess that's correct. That's correct, yes.
It is correct, okay. That was just a question that someone asked me to ask, and so thank you very much for your time. And don't forget about the bicycle giveaway on Thursday, May 8th, from 10:00 to noon at 704 South Glover in Urbana. Thank you. And thanks for the two minutes.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, just on the bedroom community thing, usually when you talk about bedroom community, you're talking about a community that has people commuting from your community to other places to work, and actually, Urbana is the opposite. We have more jobs here than we have employers, employees. We have more jobs because of the county facilities and the university, and also some good employers like the form, Dart Container, Fresca Aviation, Super Value, a lot of big employers really, and a pretty good amount of retail, so it's not really a bedroom community.
Bishop King James Underwood is concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision, but he does not wish to speak.
Palm Youth.
Aforementioned, Palm Youth, 207 West Illinois in Urbana. Well, I was mainly going to speak about the taser issue, but since the social justice issue was raised, I think the Urbana should be committed to social justice and should use some portion of its money to support those agencies. I'm hoping, I'm not a fan of Quinn, actually, frankly, I'm a pensioner, but I would like to see the tax swap actually happen, and whatever increment of money it was that was going to be traded for the continuation of the income tax, which is another issue I could return to another time, but, well, I'd like to say that at least if the tax is phased out at the state level, will be lower than Indiana, or actually, Indiana has a county income tax, so if you add that in, they're actually right around 5%, which is what we're at now. So this idea of Illinois being a low-tax state, actually, there's a group called ITEP, I T E P dot org, recommend it, I should have sent some links. Illinois is fourth in the terrible 10. Those are the bottom 10 as far as tax inequities. A big D democratic state like Illinois, and we're, that would be like, we're 46, I think. We're four from the bottom. Washington State, another big D democratic state, is actually 50th in tax inequity. I recommend you look at it. It's, and I thought of an interesting segue to talking about tasers, is that the Democratic platform calls for no acquisition of tasers. So I think you should stand on commitment to tax fairness and commitment to not having brutal reactions. The video that was shown, I was gassed that that was even offered as a reason for tasers. That is a reason for a real authentic crisis intervention team training. That guy, all he did was say, dropped the knife like 25 times. Didn't ask the guy to get off the street, didn't ask him to sit down, didn't ask him, he wasn't threatened directly. The only person who was threatened was the guy with the knife. I think it's absolutely absurd that that could actually be offered as a reason for tasers. And I know at least one of you has read the Braidwood Committee report, or looked at it. That was the B.C. report that actually broke the lawsuit-winning history of TASER International. And the allegation is now that they're actually just paying hush money. And so the figures that you see about settlements for TASER use are not representative. They pay hush money, they settle out of court. It's a common phenomenon. Well, I didn't turn my timer on, so I don't know how I'm doing. But the other thing I mentioned to Mr. Jacobson on the way in, and I think I would like to repeat it here, is that the police chief offered this injury to the officers as a reason that we should have tasers, and then refused to disaggregate the numbers. How can you offer a statistic like that and then say, "But I'm not going to explain to you why that's an authentic reason"? That is just absurd. There's a category, deaths proximate to TASER use, that is another way that they get out of the actual deaths from TASER use. They don't die right away, so it's kind of like GIs that get swindled out of their injuries because they say that it was done later on. So I think I've hit most of the points here. So maybe I should go be vitriolic about Carl on my way out, because I think it's important to do it. Someone here who was not sympathetic particularly to Carl, Mr. Brown, said that they're just doing what the law allowed, and he knows that they lobbied to have the definition changed so that that is what the law allowed. Now, that's absurd and outrageous, and they're such a great employer, and they're such a great, I mean, I go there, I respect their facilities, but I don't think that should obscure your vision to what they're really doing. They're not a nonprofit, they are a corporation. Do I still have a moment? Oh, let's see, what else is in here? Oh, yeah, agitated syndrome. I could be accused of it now, right now. It's actually, what is the real name for that? Yeah. I can, there's a...
Don't worry, you're not going to be tased.
Yeah. Yeah. There are articles in, again, the B.C., the British Columbia papers about this issue. When that Braidwood issue, the report, there was so much TASER use there that even in Canada, that they had to, well, I can't find the quotes right now, but the allegation is that this is just a made-up kind of syndrome. The emergency room physicians and medical examiners, who generally examine the people after they've expired, so I don't know how much they have to say, but AMA does not have a category for this delirium thing. And you can find, if you look, you can find quotes from psychologists who say this is just a cover-up to excuse the unwarranted and sometimes fatal use of force on people who are in a crisis and need a crisis intervention team, which we're not very good at. Thank you. Somebody have a question?
Diane?
Hi, I just wanted to, one little clarification. The American College of Emergency Physicians do recognize excited...
Yeah, I think I said that. I don't know if I called them that, but yeah.
Yeah, but what you said was that emergency room physicians examine people after they're dead?
No, I said the medical examiners are the other group that...
They do recognize it.
The American College of Medical Examiners, or whatever their name is, I was trying to be macabre-ly funny, actually. They generally, medical examiners don't generally look at it when they're in an agitated state, they look at them afterwards.
But emergency room physicians do, correct?
But the emergency room physicians do recognize it as, there are articles about it, they've talked about it. I don't know if they, they don't...
It is their position.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but I really think it is a made-up syndrome, and you can find psychologists who will...
So what's your medical training?
I, I don't know if I should even ask...
Zero, okay. Thanks for the answer.
I don't think I should even answer that, as a...
Thank you for your answer.
Because I think that's an almanum. I tell you, you can cite, you can find psychologists who are credentialed who will say these things. Is that good enough for you?
No, not really. You know, I would rather, I would rather, I would rather, you know what? I'm not going to sit here and listen to this guy with his almanum attack.
That's what you're paid to do, sir.
No, no, wait a minute, without responding, sir.
Okay.
So now I listen to you patiently, I listen to you...
And you asked me what my credentials were, and I was citing people who have credentials.
No. But it's not people. It's not people.
Let's not badger the public, okay?
You want me to give a name?
I'm not badgering him. Hang on just a second.
Okay, I would, let's just, I think you're kind of out of order here, sir.
All I'm saying is, I would just appreciate if, when you come here, you talk to us about truths. You misrepresented the emergency room physician's position.
I did not.
You clearly did. Go back and listen to the tape.
I said the MEs and the...
I just want it corrected.
I gave the wrong name, but I mentioned emergency room doctors.
Okay, well, I appreciate the correction.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Muth. Peter Folk, do you want to talk at the time that your item comes up? Okay. All right. Unfinished business, I'm sure there's lots of it, but we're not dealing with it tonight. Reports of standing committees, committee of the whole. Diane?
Ordinance number 2014-04-04O, which is the ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Cake Design Development LLC, Series 204 West Main. For the committee, I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-04-041, which is the ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2013 through 14 redevelopment agreement with Cake Design Development LLC.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? You voting on this?
Yes, I do. I guess if it's a budget, I do, yes. That motion carries. Diane?
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-04-042, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2013 through 14 Legacy Tree Program.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-04-043, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Gargoyle Technologies Doing Business as Volo Broadband.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Second by Smythe, and we have Peter Folk here who would like to comment.
Could we, could we get a, I wonder, Peter, before you go, I don't know if it's more appropriate to get a, we didn't get a staff report on this last week. Do we need a staff report first? I don't know if, yeah, we should probably get a staff report and then have Peter speak to it.
So who is the staff member that's going to do this? Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
Real quick, the legal division received the appropriate information, asked of it last Monday, and found that was acceptable, that they met the criteria, that they wouldn't need to have a maintenance fee in the packets. Brad prepared a memo which has the locations of the exhibits of the various areas where fiber is proposed to be provided by Gargoyle, and the license agreement language otherwise is fairly standard language compared to other similar providers of such services that we've reviewed in the past. Nothing out of the ordinary there, and Brad and I are here, our legals here, to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? There do not appear to be any questions.
Right.
Peter, do you want to add to this?
Sure, Peter Folk, excuse me, Peter Folk, 1407 South Maple Street, Urbana, Illinois. I was speaking with, how do I make this full screen? Sorry. There we go. I was speaking with one of your members, and he suggested that he had not known a lot of the things that I had talked to him about, about what we do and where we currently have infrastructure which supports this build-out. And so I prepared a quick presentation. You have a paper copy of it, and so I'll just go through it quickly, if that's, all right.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Just briefly about Volo. I founded Volo in 2002. We've been providing services here for 12 years. We've actually also been providing some other services for a couple of years prior to that. We have 100% local staff. We provide 24/7 call support for all of our customers with a live person, somebody who actually knows what's going on on the network 24 hours a day. We started wireless, but most of our expansion over the last few years has been fiber-based. We have worked with the City of Urbana on a variety of different projects, including we provided your link to the ICN for a couple of years, and we also helped build out the fiber infrastructure that replaced that link, and that is now part of UC2B. We also worked with the Urbana Library and the Park District and the School District when possible. We supplied the link that is allowing them to broadcast the baseball games currently on UP-TV, and we provide the wireless infrastructure that the library uses to give patrons free access to wireless. Volo's existing fiber footprint is surprisingly large. I think that was probably the biggest surprise when I was speaking with Councilmember Roberts. We have fiber that goes all the way from Paxton, Illinois, to Champaign, and we have other infrastructure that goes out to St. Joe, though it's not fiber yet. So we currently serve about 700 residents of Urbana with fiber infrastructure, and that's in various apartment buildings that we have along the, along our fiber route here that uses state right-of-way, not city right-of-way, and that's why it hasn't come before you, previously. We also provide fiber-based services via UC2B, and specifically, our largest concentration is in the Housing Authority buildings. In Urbana, there's Steer Place, and in Champaign, there's Skelton Place and Washington Square. We provide a low-cost but extremely high-speed service there, and also a low-cost phone service there. There's a pretty hard-to-read map, I apologize that it's so hard to read in the printout, but it basically shows the extent of our coverage. The green blob on the left, on the right, is Paxton, and the blue blob on the south is St. Joe. Our plans for Urbana for 2014, which is what is before you today, involve four primary areas. At the north end of town is Timber Hills, which actually is part in the city and part out of the city. We've talked with Jim Prather, the county, or the Township Roads Commissioner, about the part that's outside of the city, and this covers the part that's in the city. Downtown Urbana, Blair Park area, which goes from Race Street on the west to Wiley School, which is Anderson Street on the east, and Michigan on the north to Montclair on the south, and an area near Myra Ridge Trails Drive and the pines. Our goal with that variety of areas was to basically pick three different, four different types of clientele in Urbana, so that we could get a complete picture on how uptake and cost is building out in Urbana. So this is our, this is a test bed for us with the goal of serving more areas in Urbana as soon as it is financially feasible. There are some additional areas that are on the next map that are in lighter blue that we expect to build out with this infrastructure, but they're private property, so they're not part of the easement or the license agreement, and we have to get permission from them to do that build-out. We expect it to happen, but it's, you know, it's not under my control and it's not under your control. And this is the brief map of our planned coverage in Urbana 2014. The blue areas are the areas that are covered by this license agreement. The, well, it's very hard to tell the difference in these blues. The cyan areas are the areas that require additional permission from private parties, and the green areas are existing coverage. There's an added bonus to this build-out. We will be providing Wi-Fi for Blair Park as per... We will be providing Wi-Fi for Blair Park as part of the, part of the project. We worked with the Parks, Park District on that. And the basic services that we're going to be offering on this network are super-fast internet, starting at $30 a month. This is the lowest price for this type of internet access in the nation at this time. There's a company in Vermont that sells it for $35. Google sells similar service for $70 a month. We also have a phone service that's $13 a month for unlimited, unlimited service. You do have to have an internet connection, but you don't have to have Rs. to get that service. We will be offering TV, but not through the fiber at this time. That requires a whole nother slate of legal challenge, legal stuff that we have to go through, so that, that will maybe be before you sometime later this year, and maybe not. We will, we're gonna do our best to get that done quickly. But in the meantime, we will be offering satellite TV options and also helping people cut the cord where they get over-the-air TV. We, we have some really great low-cost equipment that they can install, so that they have all the DVR features that they would have, but they don't pay a cable bill. And just, if you have any other questions, you can reach out to us anytime, and any member of the public who has questions about this build-out can reach out to us at any time. Again, 24/7 on our phone. Email is also kind of 24/7, I guess, and the website is, of course.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Diane.
I had one about net neutrality. I've been reading a lot about this recent decision that'll allow internet service providers, I think, to create like a fast lane and a slow line on broadband, and people have to pay more for, this looks like gigabit speed here. Are you going to maintain net neutrality, or is that going to affect your?
It's a little early for us to tell what that actually means, what the FCC rules will actually shake out to mean.
Okay.
My reading of them is that they don't actually let internet service providers charge customers more. What it does allow internet service providers to do is charge, provide, content providers like Facebook or Google, we could try and bill them for a faster lane on the network. So it's not, that, again, this, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, and this is my reading of the, of the ruling only, but my understanding is that it's not actually that we would create a fast service and a slow service and bill people for that. It's that we can preferentially charge content providers. That said, we have no interest in that. We would, we would very much like to avoid that. That, that's an extra burden that we don't think we should need.
Okay, thank you.
Eric.
So does your highest-end service involve building fiber right up to the residence unit?
Yes, all of the services, even the $30 a month one includes, involves fiber up to the residence.
Dennis.
Yeah, and the reason why I suggested that you make the presentation is, that I didn't realize that Volo went all the way up to Paxton. That was like a, kind of a mind-opener to me. I'm aware somewhat of what happens in town, but the fact that you actually go beyond the limits of the city area and have wide-ranging service areas was really interesting to me. And you did say that you, you were intending to make the connections to the home, and there would not be a service fee? Is that, did I read that correctly?
Not quite. Our, our goal with most installs is to not have a setup or installation fee, but that has to be offset by various things. So with our lowest-level service, if that's all you're getting, right now, our plan is about $150 connect fee. If you get one of our higher-end services, or you get a low-end service plus a TV installation or something like, some combination of those, we, we try to eliminate that cost for most people, and in Thomasboro, we've been mostly successful in that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2014-04-023R, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local agency's state agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Windsor Road reconstruction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson, if I heard correctly. Any questions? Any discussion? Would the clerk please call? Whoops, go ahead.
I want to announce that we firmed up a public information meeting for Windsor Road Project, and there'll be a press release probably Monday, but advance notice here is on Thursday, May 15th, so a week from this Thursday, at the Fiallo Road Church of Christ. That's the northwest corner of Fiallo and Windsor. Between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, we'll have an information meeting. Just today in my office, we received a set of the pre-final plans, so this has been very much fast-tracked project. So we're trying to make a June 22nd week, whatever, letting date, so we hope to go out for bids toward the end of June. So anyway, any questions, any inquiries? Probably the most intrusive part of this project will be the actual closure for a period of time for the major intersections. So north-south travel on Fiallo Road would be disrupted at portions of the time, same with Race Streets. East-west travel will always be open, but there will be portions of time because of the narrowness of the width of the road. We can't build it under traffic, so that will be a disruption. But anyway, information like that will be provided at the meeting on May 15th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Fiallo Road Church of Christ.
Okay, any other questions for Bill? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move ordinance number 2014-04-044, which is an ordinance approving, authorizing, entering into, and executing an agreement granting into feasible right to use optical fiber assets, authorizes the entering into and execution of an agreement with UC2B not-for-profit, providing the city of Urbana the into feasible right to use certain optical fiber assets.
And I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries. Diane.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance 2014-04-045, which is an ordinance approving, authorizing, entering into, and executing an agreement to maintain certain optical fiber assets, authorizing the entering into and execution of an agreement with UC2B not-for-profit, providing the city of Urbana the into feasible right to use certain optical fiber assets.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries. Diane.
And finally, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2014-04-024R, resolution approving the engagement of Baker Tilly Virchow and Kraus LLP for financial auditing services for the city of Urbana fiscal years 2014 through 2018.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Are there any officers who have a report? Tom Carino.
Good evening. Everyone should have received a copy of this month's economic development report. Just to highlight a few items, ribbon cutting was held for champagne cycle in Urbana. That's at 110 South Race Street. The Iliac, which is a new free spring festival, will be held in downtown Urbana, and that'll take place on May 10th. And that's an event that is being done by the promoter of Pygmalion, but that will be exclusive, Iliac will be exclusively in Urbana with support from Market at the Square and the city of Urbana. Also, we've had some interest in the request for qualifications for commercial realty services that the city issued for the 200 block of South Vine Street, which is the block just north of City Hall. Actually, proposals for providing commercial realty services are due at, by 11:59 midnight this evening, and we've had some proposals submitted, and we've had some interest, so that's great. Staff is working on a draft agreement with the Mass Transit District on partnering on a redevelopment project on a yet-to-be-determined site. This is a preliminary, preliminary draft agreement saying that we'd like to partner to do a redevelopment project potentially involving some private partners, and that will be, that draft will be, be becoming before city council in the next couple of weeks, so you'll see a copy of that. Just to highlight a few more items, Cafe Bene held a ribbon cutting at Gregory Place on April 11th. Huge turnout, lots of activity, and they appear to be doing very well. Ribbon cutting was held at the new Berkey's Farm Store on High Cross Road on April 4th, also very well-attended, lots of activity. April 10th, there was a Realtors' Bus Tour, very successful, with over 40 Realtors in attendance. Representatives of the city, the Urbana Business Association, the Urbana Free Library, the Park District, the School District, all talking to Realtors about the great things happening in Urbana. We have geared up for the Market at the Square this season. What can only be described as a media blitz over the last week related to morning shows and getting the word out about the market. Also, a presence at the Working Women's Expo, Clark Lindsay Village Health and Wellness Fair, as well as marathon-related events. And then finally, over 50 people attended a reception to celebrate the 2014 Urbana Arts Grants recipients. That took place on April 3rd. And then also, a ceremony to dedicate "By Ways to Equality" by Preston Jackson was held on April 19th. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom? Eric Jacobson has a question.
Yeah, so I'm, you know, I'm really loving what I'm seeing about what's happening downtown and, and hearing about Campus Town and elsewhere. Is this actually translating into at least the beginning of an uptick in sales tax revenue? Can we see that yet?
I can't say that I've worked closely with the Finance Department on specific sales tax numbers, but I think what I can say is that vacancies specifically in downtown are certainly lower than they've been. And not just vacancies down, but more active uses within those spaces, probably better than I've seen in my, my years here at the city of Urbana. So again, I don't know if I, I've, I've not worked specifically with Finance to look at specific sales tax figures, but certainly more positive activity than in previous years.
Dennis.
And Tom, isn't it true, I think I remember reading the report, that during this last month, two businesses committed to moving from outside of the city to our downtown areas in this report? We have two, we're two relocations, one from downtown Champaign and one from Marketplace.
Yeah, I mean, we, again, vacancies are down. We've had some new businesses. We've had some relocations from other areas of the community, but yes, we've seen some positive activity and, and refilling of, of underutilized spaces.
Diane.
I had a question from a resident, actually. Are these economic development reports, and I admit I haven't gone to look on the website, but are these filed in a specific place on the website, so somebody could get all of them at once in one place?
The, the reports, now that they're included in the council packet, they're available along the council, along with the council packets.
But you'd have to go to each individual meeting to get them?
Yeah, I mean, we could probably try to figure out if we could, we, if we could store these documents in one centralized place. As of right now, though, you, you can get them online, but you get them as part of the council packet.
So I'm gonna have to do, it'd be great if they were in one place, because it's really, I mean, it's terrific to see all this activity and to be able to say, okay, if you want to see, I'm not sure how long we've been doing these reports, but they've been really useful, and I think it'd make a great.
We, we can certainly talk about how we can do that and facilitate people getting the information.
Great, thanks.
Eric.
I'll just second Diane's comment. I think that would be very, very desirable.
Thank you very much, Tom. Any other reports of officers? Okay, well, we'll go, do you want to go first, Libby?
Yeah.
Okay.
It occurs to me that this will be Tom's last economic development report to the council, so wanted to, he'll be back to the council with more items in May, but his last monthly reports, I wanted to thank him for the great reporting.
They're not applauding your partnership, or applauding your service.
Okay. Bill Gray was first, I think, then Chief Connolly. How do you want to do it? Chief Connolly is first.
Mayor, I will be very short. Ms. Ammons, on the 28th, requested a few other documents concerning the issue of tasers, so I have those documents this evening. Since Ms. Ammons isn't here, they will be passed around, and if the clerk, please, would just hang on to her copy, that would be wonderful. Secondly, and just to reiterate, I, if I was responsible for any confusion, the last gentleman that spoke said we didn't talk much about police officer injuries and whatnot. If I failed to communicate that accurately, next week, Lieutenant Rich Searls is going to be here. He's collected that information, is going to share that, Mr. Jacobson. I'm inches away from getting all the information you requested concerning the ER stuff. So hopefully, the rest of that information is coming, it's just overwhelming, so.
Thank you for digging out all this information and answering all the questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Bill Gray.
Hopefully, you had a chance to look in your packet, but I just wanted to remind council and the audience that the High Cross Road project will be starting up next week. Fairly significant project for Urbana. Again, it's adding lanes, two lanes in each direction on High Cross Road between University Avenue to south of Florida Avenue Extended. We hope with cooperative weather that that work will be done, probably by December 1st. Again, one impactful part of that project will be the full closure of Washington Street, the west leg. Right now, we're tentatively have that early June, probably go through the whole summer period, so if you take Washington east to, from downtown east to the post office, or Walmart, or what have you, we would ask that use University Avenue. So anyway, that's, project gonna be starting up next week.
Any questions for Bill? Charlie has a question.
I was just gonna comment. We're gonna have a significant construction, road construction season this year, between High Cross, Windsor, and the, and the neighborhood projects that are going on. People need to keep an eye out for those press releases and, and of course, share them with your neighborhood groups and stuff as, as they come out.
And Olympian Drive, too, right? Okay. That's a lot of projects. Mike Madigan?
Just real quick, Bill, you guys always do a great job with this kind of thing, but given the, the timing of this and Windsor Road, and since this is kind of out in my neck of the woods, but I think everybody in Urbana is concerned about it, anything we can do to make people understand that these funds are separate from what we could do at Windsor, and why can't we just reallocate, that kind of thing? I think we really need to, to emphasize what's going on in terms of potential economic development in this project, and the state funds, federal funds, as opposed to what we have to do at Windsor, and how they're financially completely separate. Anything you can do, please.
We'll try to emphasis, try to emphasize that as much as we can. Thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, I would just say simply, every communication about the project might include a reference to the funding source. a reference to the funding source.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, since it was alluded to earlier, May is sort of a national Bike Month. Different communities do just a Bike to Work Day, or Bike to School Day, or one of each. Some communities do Bike to Work Week. We actually, in Champagne, Urbana, do a Bike Month, a series of different things, including Bike to Market, Bike to School, Bike to Work, Bike to Campus, and some other, some other events coming up, including a moonlight bike ride for ice cream and things like that. The full schedule, you can sign up to do one of these events and get a free t-shirt on a first-come, first-served basis. CUBike.org. CUBike.org for all, for all the information. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Mike.
Eric asked about sales taxes, and we were working on the budget on that, and they are up this, this year so far, but it was fairly modestly, like in the neighborhood of 1%. The hotel motel tax and the food and beverage taxes are a higher percentage than that, they're doing pretty well.
We don't get information on individual enterprises, so we have to look at the, at the grand total, and there's kind of a lag between when the tax is collected and when the state turns it over, so.
Yeah, of course.
But they're, you know, they're doing a good business, so it's got to be adding to the revenues. Okay, I'd like to go to new business now, mayoral appointments. I have Andrew Stumpf to the Sustainability Advisory Board, and Matthew Metcalf to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve those two appointments.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Jacobson. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, thank you very much. We will move on to ordinance number 2014-03-024. An ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the schedule of fees. And here is Beth Beatty to, to say what's happened. We've, we've had this out there for 60 days, is that what it was?
Thirty.
Thirty days, okay.
Well, you have your revised memo with a couple of the changes that you had asked for, and you also had asked how much these proposed fees will generate in additional revenue, and it's estimated about $65,000. So, are there any questions?
Diane.
Oh, sorry. Can you remind me, on, on the very first page, it's got a purchase schedule, temporary permits, relative to one day and three days. What are those permits for?
It's the West Urbana Special Parking Zone, the three to three.
Anyone else? Mike Madigan?
Just a comment. Last time we talked about this, Beth sat there and I gave her a hard time about some of these fees, and I subsequently visited her office and apologized to her, because I really shouldn't have been questioning her. I think we ought to take a, a serious look at how we, how we review the fee schedule, and I don't think it's necessarily in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city to approach it the way we are right now. I think that there ought to be a bit more deliberate approach. I think there ought to be, and this is, this is absolutely no criticism of Beth, she keeps the fee schedule and communicates with the division heads about what needs to be changed, and so she's the keeper of the list. I think the person, the persons who ought to be sitting at the table and answering questions of the City Council should be the division heads. I understand that they're available for questions and that kind of thing if we have them, but I think there must, ought to be a much more deliberate and frankly responsible approach to fee increases, and that should entail division heads themselves requesting them and justifying them with written memoranda to the council. And so I'll be proposing an ordinance in the future here to set forth a structure to do just that, in part to take Beth off the hook, but in, in all seriousness, in private business, we agonize over, over these kind of things before we raise prices, and I don't see that kind of, I don't see that kind of thing going on here. So I think if it is, it ought to be brought out into the light, it ought to be more deliberate, it ought to be in writing to the council, and then it ought to be defended before the council. So, and while I understand the, the concept of time value of money and that some of these things need to be increased now and again to keep up with inflation, I remain unconvinced that there has been a, a deliberate and consistent effort to scour the operations of the city for savings before asking for increases, therefore I'll be voting no.
I would like to say that Beth is a division head. Perhaps you mean you want the department head to do it?
I'll clarify my comments and say department heads.
Okay.
The top dogs.
But the, the City of Urbana has taken the position that these things should be gradually increased over time because of inflation, and a lot of them are tied to the cost of actually doing things, but I know that Champagne didn't do it for 10 years or so, and then you get these abrupt increases, so that's been the philosophy, so.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the philosophy, I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to lay out a more deliberate process to show that we've done everything we can to avoid the fee increase before imposing it. Because unlike a business where we raise prices and customers can decide whether or not to come through our door, for the most part, the, the business, certainly the businesses and, and to a large extent the residents of Urbana are, are captive to these fees, and so I think we owe it to them to invoke a bit more deliberate and transparent process.
Okay, anyone else? Do we, do we have a motion yet?
No.
Charlie?
I'll move approval.
And Diane, did you want to, you, you have a question?
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Okay, Diane seconds a motion and your question.
If, do I remember right, we're going to be reviewing the parking meter rates and the parking garage.
Yes.
Income and expenses at some point?
Yes. I'm gathering people together, we're gonna form a committee to look at that, different things, on a fee increase for the downtown and just planning for the future, parking deck, all that to increase those.
And then do all these fees go into the general fund?
All the fees in the fee schedule go into the general fund.
Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, you know, I, I understand where Mike's coming from, and we did have some discussion of, you know, why this was going up here and why, why that was going up there. I don't think it would take much to add that verbiage to the memo that we get. I know it's, it's discussed extensively in the staff. I don't think it will require an ordinance, it just means we as council simply say we want to see more verbiage in the memo to justify these things and be prepared to, you know, provide evidence and back that up when you, you know, when you make that request. And in, in that memo, it shouldn't be attributed to one particular department, it should, you know, have a reference to the, the, the agency within the city. You know, I, I want to, I want to see that transparency that you're asking for, and I think that, that transparency, or the justification is there, because when you, when you drill down and start asking the questions, there usually is a pretty good reason. Part of it is inflation. I know that, you know, for example, the, in my neighborhood, the West Urbana neighborhood, the, the parking fee is going up, you know, from 135 to 150, but it hasn't changed since it was established in 1999.
It hasn't changed for a really long time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you know, some, it's, it's many, many years, and, 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 you know, to me, the, the bump in the, in the temporary, the, the single night, the, the three-night fee was too much, and, and we all agreed it was too much, we brought it down. So that was, that was a good discussion in that particular example, so I, I think it's justified, and, and I have no problem supporting this.
And can I amend that? The fees in the fee schedule, there are some fees that go into the motor vehicle, NVPS, like the parking rentals, things like that, so.
That would be good to know where, where these things end up.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can definitely break it down by department and everything like that.
I have one.
Another question?
One last question. When, when we're actually charging a fee for, I'll just use UPTV access fees or camera operator building monitor, is, is that actually the actual cost for, for use of the building or for paying a camera operator, or is it still?
I'm gonna say yes, but I could probably email you to confirm that, but I would say yes, that a lot of these fees are to cover the cost, the recording fees that you see and the camera operator, it's just to recoup if something were to happen.
And the Civic Center's probably another one.
Civic Center would be the same for any of those additional fees, like cleanup, use of the kitchen.
So it actually reflects actual costs?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the fee schedule. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons? Guess we lost her, okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2014-03-036, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14-7, regarding the Schedule of Fees Subsection A, Liquor Licenses. And this is for July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015.
Madam Mayor.
It's kind of buried in your packet on the fees. Oh, yes, Mr. Madigan needs to.
As a liquor license holder, holder in the City of Urbana, state statute requires me to recuse myself from this issue.
Okay, we did separate it out for that very reason. Okay. So this is amending the fees.
Move approval.
Motion by Smythe?
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Smythe.
I have sent around a memo and made a couple comments about what I think are problems with the T3 part of this licensing. I've asked that that be on, I asked the people that I've sent that memo to to please look at it again, ask me any questions, but I would like to take, have that as an item as requested last week on next week's agenda.
So you want to pass this and then maybe modify?
And then modify the T3 part.
Okay.
Yes, as I, as I've mentioned before.
Okay, we can do that. But we'll just vote on this as is?
Yes, yeah.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries, and we'll bring up Charlie's suggestions at, on next Monday, the committee of the whole, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. Okay, Public Arts Program update, our public art people have patiently waited.
Good evening, Lisa Hachadorian, Public Arts Coordinator, and I have with me Patricia Salmon, Chair of the Public Arts Commission, who has graciously come to us this evening to help me present the program plan for fiscal year 1314 as an update. So this is the sixth year of the public art program, and it has been six years of success for fiscal year 1314. Just a brief overview of what we've accomplished. We have given out 32 Urbana Arts Grants and awarded $47,500 in funds to these arts grants for this particular year. We've had a full roster of five weeks of performances, 10 in total, performances and workshops at the Art at the Market, at Urbana's Market in the Square, with over 600 people reached. We just had a dedication and installation of Preston Jackson's "Byways to Equality" in King Park on April 19th, an installation and dedication of two warrior plaques for fiscal year 1314 for the Urbana Library and the Landmark Hotel. We've had five artist of the corridor exhibitions, and we just changed our exhibitions out today, so we have a new exhibition for the next three months of legacy tree art from Prairie Elementary School and University Primary School. We spotlighted nine artists with Art Now and UPTV. We were the recipient of an Illinois Arts Council Program Grant for the fourth consecutive year and have also applied for this upcoming fiscal year. And we had a robust public arts intern program, and I want to especially thank Julianne Huell, who's the intern in the transition, for keeping the, kind of the application process and the grants process going in the transition period. So just some visuals, nice meaty visuals, workshop from last summer, t-shirts to tote bags, and then an image of the Preston Jackson dedication. And just to go over kind of a program review of fiscal year 13 and 14. So we have our Public Arts Commission, Patricia Salmon, Chair, Virginia Waller, Vice Chair, and she's here tonight, Gregory Chu, Barbara Hedlund, Alona Matkowski, John Morrison, Kevin Hamilton, Robin Douglas, and Eric Jacobson. I want to again thank them for their service very much. We always do like to supplement our programming and our budgets with the, within this program, so we have resource in program development. With this last year, we had $4,100 in programming grant from the Illinois Arts Council, and that was for general operating support, and also a $5,000 donation from the Urbana Business Association for Business Backs the Arts in our Urbana program grants. We do partner with many organizations in the two cities, and we have over a dozen partnerships as you can see. We do a lot with marketing, have done more so in this past year, regular email newsletters, Facebook, Twitter accounts, so very steady growth. We have increased presence in print and radio, online advertising, mainly thanks to Natalie Kenny Marquez, our marketing coordinator, and along with the Urbana Business Association. And we do informational, physical informational pieces, including a seasonal guide to classes that Pat puts together, and also general program information. So just to touch on some of the key parts of the program, Urbana Arts Grants Program, over the past six years, we've had 143 projects that we have funded in six grant cycles with over $279,000 given to grantees, and I think that's an amazing number. We've implemented an online application system for the second year that streamlined our process. We received 40 applications in this last year, funded 32 projects in all the arts, and again, we gave out $47,500. These are just some visuals of the grants that we funded in this past year. Urbana Pops on the left, and Out of the Mouth of Babes Radio Program for Kids on the right. The hardly needs to be talked about Boneyard Arts Festival, and then Kate Cooper's Movement with Science on the right. One project that will hopefully be coming to fruition and actually in this next fiscal year, but that has been going along well for this fiscal year is Boneyard Creek Public Art. Murals on Glass, this is a project that was developed a couple years ago, and it has been ongoing and will be up for renewal in a year. This is just a visual of two mural on glass that we have in downtown. The Urbana Sculpture Project, we have five sculptures in the downtown area that are leased through mid-2014, and these will be assessed for renewal again in mid-2014. We're getting into our Art in the Market season for the summer, and so just to kind of touch on what happened for fiscal year 13 and 14, we had five sets of sets of monthly workshops and performances and over six hundred people that were, um, touched with the workshops and performances, and they were everything from t-shirts to tote bags to printmaking, um, and a lot of different types of musical groups. So there's a lot of variety. In fiscal year thirteen and fourteen, we had two dedications in the Joseph Royer Arts and Architecture District, one with the Urbana Free Library and also with the Landmark Hotel, and this was done, um, during the Boneyard Arts Festival and also the Sister Cities Association Annual Meeting, so there was a lot of attendance and interest. Our Art in the Schools Program, we got that up and running with the coordination with King School with educational arts programming relating to the King Park Public Art Project. That particular program reached over half the school population of a hundred and seventy students, and it included both a musical and art component as the students studied the work of Dr. King and the Civil Rights Movement. Artist of the Corridor Program, we conducted and displayed five different exhibitions over the last fiscal year, all Urbana-centric with Meredith Foster, Jason Patterson, Urbana's Market in the Square artwork, um, and what we just installed today with the Legacy Tree Grade School artwork and artist Steve Crustell. And these are just some images of Jason Patterson on the left and then Meredith Foster's work on the right. Art Now, our wonderful U P T P program, um, we had a thirty-minute episode produced every month featuring interviews by public art commissioners with local artists working in a variety of media, and they're available on U P T V and online and, oh, and on YouTube, can't forget that. Uh, nine episodes were produced and aired and Pat and Greg Chu were instrumental in producing those. The King Park Public Art Project was done to completion. Preston Jackson Sculpture, Byways to Equality was installed and dedicated in this fiscal year, and this was a great partnership with the Urbana Parks District, and you can see some images from the dedication from about two, two and a half weeks ago. So looking ahead to fiscal year fourteen fifteen, we're looking at a, another year of success with our program of work. We are going to be delving into more of the Urbana Grants Arts Program, uh, finishing up Boneyard Creek and looking to some public art activities to coincide with the opening of Boneyard Creek when it completes its construction phase. Um, we're going to be looking at the Urbana Sculpture Project and looking at renewals or switching out sculptures, booking art workshops and performances for the market, and interest in those have been very high. I had about twenty-five applications for that particular series this year. Looking at Joseph Royer Arts and Architecture District Planning, um, Arts in the Schools Programming, more, booking more Artist of the Corridor, and looking at more, um, U P T P programming, and we're looking at more fundraising research and development to supplement the budget and a fresh look at Cunningham Avenue Beautification. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mike Madigan?
So what would the, uh, what would your fresh look at Cunningham Avenue Beautification be?
It's very early to say right now. We're just having a very preliminary meeting to kind of look at where we are in the project, so I can't really even say. It's very, very early on. We're just kind of taking a look at where we are with it.
Okay, it's not in my ward, but I have a keen interest, so. I'd appreciate being in communication with you on that.
Okay.
Tom Carino has, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I have another question, um, Diane's got it circled, I probably ought to let her go after it, but, uh, we both kind of honed in on, um, five thousand dollars from the Urbana Business Association that funds you. We probably ought to just clean up the books and reduce our appropriation to the Urbana Business Association and buy five thousand dollars and, uh, you know, take care of that through the city since we already subsidized them to the tune of almost a hundred thousand dollars. So it's a bit odd that they're contributing to you when we're funding them, you know, to the tune of that much money. Uh, third question, uh, not a third question, a third, uh, observation and a first question. How much of your budget, um, is matching funds or your proposed budget from sources, you know, state donations, other?
Let me check really quickly.
Okay.
Oh, Tom Carino has something to say while you're looking.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but maybe I could try to ans, I could try to talk to Cunningham Avenue Beautification.
Go for it.
Uh, the, the city, uh, had previously done a Cunningham Avenue Beautification Plan, and there were some significant arts components to that, uh, beautification plan. It's not feasible to do all of those, and so we've looked over the years what is feasible, and, and at one point, we were working with the University of Illinois Employees Credit Union to do, uh, perhaps a partnership, a public art partnership at their property. But they, I think they're looking to go in a different direction than what we were talking about previously, so, um, I think, um, there is, there is interest in doing a public art component to Cunningham Avenue Beautification, but there's going to be a lot of discussion about what that looks like and, and what it'll be, so.
Okay.
Would, I'd like to just follow up briefly on that.
Go ahead.
Would that be a, a TIF-funded venture potentially?
Actually, a, a majority of the public arts program budget is, are TIF funds, a, and so in, in reference to your question about, uh, Business Backs the Arts, the UBA Business Backs the Arts, that is, that five thousand dollars is a, um, not restricted to TIF districts, so that, the five thousand from UBA is valuable, uh, in that the five thousand is available for arts projects citywide, uh, whereas, uh, a lot of the money is restricted to TIF districts. So that's one adv, that's one advantage of keeping that, that Business Backs the Arts UBA program alive in that, uh, that five thousand is unrestricted geographically, whereas a lot of the, uh, money, uh, is restricted geographically. But to answer your question about Cunningham Avenue, that any art component along Cunningham Avenue would likely be TIF-funded.
And to ans-
Uh, Dennis Roberts has a question. Yeah.
And to answer your question about the budget, it looks like a little over ten percent of what we have right now is matching funds between Illinois Arts Council and, um, UBA.
Okay, and then finally, your, uh, the staff component of your, of your, uh, budget is not contained in this menu, uh, memo, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah. I just have two observations or thoughts. One is, uh, about the, um, uh, Arts at the Marketplace, which is, you know, I have realized, a very popular program. I'm wondering if it's possible, though, to, um, take some of the resources and, um, excitement of that program out of the marketplace location specifically and make it a broader, applied to a broader area of the community. One of the goals of the Arts Commission is, um, to encourage art at every level of the community, um, through diversity, seeking diversity in art and also serving a variety of communities. One of the, one, and, you know, as you know, I, I work with the Lerman Neighborhood. The Lerman Neighborhood in the past approached the Arts Commission for a grant for supporting , uh, arts for children in that neighborhood, specifically because they don't attend the Art, uh, the Market at the Square. Their parents don't go to the Art, to the Market at the Square, and so they're not represented. My, my observation is that most of the children who receive that kind of arts benefit are people who, um, come from families who would normally be able to probably support art experiences for their children at the school, either through music lessons or special camps already. And so I think we're missing a, a significant and an important, um, section of the community in, in art services. And, um, if the, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I, I think that the, the Market Program has been very enjoyed by many people, but I think that it has limitations, and, and the limitations have to do with, um, touching areas of the community that actually are, pretty much have zero arts experiences on a typical, um, typically in their lives. So I think a challenge would be to try to fund programs that, that bring, um, services to the most in needed, uh, in the community. So that, that's one, uh, one project that I would hope would become addressed by the Arts Commission. And the second one is, um, as you know, I've been a great proponent of the Royer Arts District, and I've had a, a very kind of mixed message from the Arts Commission about its interest in that program and its future. So I see that on your, your, um, plan for work in the future for the next budget year that you're, that one of the, one of the line items is that you're going to be exploring, development, future planning for the Royer Arts District. And I'm aware that one of the, um, people in your subcommittee is, has, is very ill at this time, and, um, I'm concerned about the, the future, um, activity of the subcommittee to help with, to expand and make aware, um, in the community, um, aspects of the Royer, um, legacy. And, uh, because the, the program hasn't been funded really by the Arts Commission in several years, can I ask, is that part of your planning to try to reincorporate some kind of funding so that this, um, locating plaques and, um, supporting the legacy of, uh, Joe Royer as an important local artist and architect, um, part of your planning discussion for the coming year?
One thing I am not clear on, and, and perhaps you can clarify this for me, is I know that you have, you particularly have another committee that is working on, um, what do I want to say? Not renovation. Restoration, and, and I didn't know if some of the funding, if, if you would have funding from that group rather than from us. That's not been cle, made clear to me?
No, there, I don't have any, I'm not participating in any kind of a restoration committee.
Are you talking about historic preservation, perhaps?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
And, and that's an unfunded, I mean, that's not a funded thing.
Okay.
Um, in the past, uh, I mean, actually, um, we, uh, to put, to fund the plaques, we really did depend upon assistance from the Arts Commission originally, and the Arts Commission decided not to fund them after a certain point, so I was able to, uh, discuss with the Mirror getting funding from Economic Development, but I can't depend upon, I don't think we can depend upon that source, you know, perpetually. It's not really a line item in the, in our city budget, and, um, uh, I mean, I, I've tried to encourage businesses and, and, um, organizations in the city to assist in putting these plaques up because of my interest in it. And I think it, you know, I have to say that as far as, um, the Arts Commission's activities in supporting the, either the, um, the Landmark Hotel plaque or the library plaque, there really wasn't any. I know you, I know I've seen it as, as one of your, one of the accomplishments of the Arts Commission, but, um, the, uh, the Library Foundation Board members completely funded the library plaque, so the Arts Commission didn't have, have anything to do with it. And I'd like to engage the Arts Commission in the future to come back, um, with a higher level of support.
Well, let me just say this. I think that my feeling and also some of the other people on the commission has been that, uh, we're not sure that our mission is necessarily to fund plaques. Now, what I, I think we would be willing to support would be the sorts of activities that you had around putting those plaques up. Uh, I know that Greg had come up with great ideas for having activities, you know, either theatrical or music or something like that, and I think we would feel much more as if that was meeting our mission if we were supporting those sorts of things rather than plaques.
Then how do you support, um, one of the, one of the goals of the Arts Commission is to support, um, architecture. It's one of the goals that's listed in your program, and, and how else can we, I mean, unless you support new construction?
I guess I don't see plaques as the only way that you can support architecture.
I think that this might be something, you, you have a funding restrictions as we all do, this might be something that the, um, proposed foundation could deal with, but Tom, Tom Carino's been trying to say something about this. Oh, Libby, whoever.
And maybe Tom was gonna say the same thing, but, you know, the, um, there might be other avenues that we can use for the plaques, including possibly in-house, and there may be some other, uh, funding sources or opportunities. Um, it really is something that's, um, maybe more of a preservation, wayfinding, not just public art, so I think that it's been really helpful to have the Public Arts Commission involved, and perhaps we can look at finding funds from other sources and continue to rely on their assistance in the subcommittee.
We've used that before, other sources, but one thing that I'm, I'm really happy to talk to people about is so many school districts talk about STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math, and Urbana schools talk about STEAM because they've added the arts, and I think that's something really good, and you're part of that whole, appreciation for the value of arts for people of all ages, and to stimulate young children to get interested in learning, I think is really one of the big things that art can do.
And then just to continue.
Sure.
I would, I, then I really appreciate the fact that, um, bringing, um, performance or other kinds of, uh, activity to the sites. And the buildings in the particular would be, um, a wonderful way of celebrating the district because it really is supposed to be supporting the arts in the downtown.
Okay, Bill Bram?
Yeah, um, thanks for the report. Are, as far as the, what was funded last year, are the reports from the, um, projects funded from the grants, are those online somewhere, that the ones that the Art Committee gets, are they all together somewhere? I don't think I've seen any. I'm kind of curious what the cardboard sculpture looks like and things like that.
You mean exactly what gets funded by?
Yeah, from the grant, the, the fifty thousand dollars of grants, what did we pay for and?
We have it online, uh, actually from two thousand nine all the way up to two thousand
I mean, I saw little one paragraph descriptions, but is there, don't they give you a report as far as, could, could those all be put together, kind of like we were talking about earlier, putting together economic development reports? It might be handy to have all those in one place?
That can be done. We actually have some of them included with Public Art Commission packets, but again, it's a question of digging through them.
Yeah, I think I've seen them occasionally in the packets, but they don't all come at once, they come at one or two at a time or something, so it'd be nice to be able to see those. Um, I think the thing, I, I think a lot of the things the Public Arts, um, Fund does well, I, the part that bothers me a little bit is that it is funded from TIF because, um, TIF, we usually would like to be able to measure results from, and we can't always do that, like even tonight, we approved a, a redevelopment measure that we probably won't be able to measure results from because it's not going to increase values, you know, significant or at all, probably. It's not going to increase the property value initially, but we still can look at it and say we expect this amount of traffic to come from that, this amount of sales tax, um, and, and kind of have a performance measure. I don't see that so much with the art, um, program because it's, it's just hard to measure, you know? How, how do you measure, um, the vitality of a city or the quality of life or how people feel about art and, and getting more people involved in art, what's the impact on the city? There's, it's hard to measure economic impact, so I'd rather see it funded out of something else and something that's probably, um, more reliable because TIF is also temporary, and I, I imagine you guys have talked about this before, and I don't remember how, what direction the, um, conversation went, but, um, if we designated fifty percent of the food and beverage tax or twenty-five percent or whatever it would, it would take, I'd be willing to consider something like that. Or I don't, I suppose you could have a referendum and see how the people of Urbana feel about if they'd want to pay an extra five percent tax or five cent tax for the arts, cultural, um, cultural amenities, special events, something like that. We could have, uh, special, isn't that possible to have a special, uh, tax approved by referendum, an extra five cents or something? So I think that's about all I had. If you have any comments on how to measure, how to measure performance from the arts program, or if you have any experience with that, um, I'd be interested in that.
There are metrics out there, they do take money to actually implement them, but there are creative index funds and things like that that are out there that can measure creativity in communities. And we would probably do pretty well on that measure, so it might be nice- So it might be nice. I think Eric was first, and then Diane.
So, since I've been sitting on the commission for, I don't know, I think it must be about six months or so, six or eight months, some reflections. First of all, I would really reinforce the notion of compiling in one place the reports of the grant recipients. Because one of the things that really has struck me about serving on the commission is how enjoyable and even fun it is to receive those reports. Because these are very creative people, they, they come in and they, they, they report to us not only in documents, but they have great videos of performances or of working with kids, or at least they have great slideshows. And so I think those, I think everybody would really enjoy it, and I think making those more accessible. I did, you know, I did raise the issue in the commission about somehow metrics on economic return. Although, we don't do the arts to make money, but on the other hand, there, there is, albeit hard to measure, there is a return. One of the, one of the things that the Public Arts Commission has supported, and that has clearly returned, has really returned multiples of the funding, is the Boneyard Arts Festival. And, you know, the number of people who actually come to town, who spend money here, is, really is, you know, that's returning many times what we have invested in that. Other things, you know, if you do a program in the schools, then that has a different kind of reward. But, but I think the other thing to talk about in terms of matching funds is that the resources that these grants, these grants mobilize tremendous volunteer resources. They seed an enormous amount of activity. The Boneyard Arts Festival really runs on a shoestring. It runs on a shoestring, I mean, we invest some money in it, it can't run on nothing. But, but then there's a tremendous amount of volunteer work that goes into organizing that. That's mostly done by volunteers. And that really is, I mean, it's a labor of love, but on the other hand, it's worth something. It's worth a lot. And so I don't know quite how to, how to do these, these calculations, but my, my gut tells me that this is, that this is, you know, that this overall is a worthwhile investment, which is not to say that we shouldn't try to figure out some metrics, you know, with respect to the money, especially because it's coming from, from TIF money, which is supposed to increase the tax base and increase future tax revenue. But, but I, I, yeah, but I, so I guess I really wanted to make two points, I was a little verbose. One is, yes, do get those reports together so that people can see them all at once, because everybody who does that will have a lot of fun. And do count somehow the number of hours that, you know, try to figure out the number of hours of volunteer activity that we mobilize with those dollar investments. Because that, that is a, it's coming for free, but it is, it is really worth a lot. And when it is possible, when we do have activities that bring people in from out of town, let's try to, let's try to at least roughly measure that in some way.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
It was a long time ago. Oh, Diane has a question, but I wondered if we even have a motion.
Hi, back to the budget. I remember asking this very same question last year, and that is, all we're seeing here is the proposed program, revenue and expenditure. But it's not, but this isn't the entire Public Arts Fund or expenditures for public art. And the question, you know, I get and I have is, what exactly are we spending? And I, I've gone through our budget, and it's really hard to look at the supplementary expenditure report or the Public Arts Fund page on 118 of our last year's budget to try to figure out how this relates to what we're seeing in our budget and how it fits into the whole context of the entire fund. I mean, the staff expenses aren't here, and there's several other expenses that aren't listed here. So, so I would, I still want to see everything in one place. You know, what are the program expenditures, the revenues for that? What are we spending on personnel? What are we spending on some of these other items that are, that show up in our budget but that don't show up in this program proposal? It's just hard to get the whole picture of this thing.
We could certainly have a presentation in the budget on the program.
Well, not just the program, it would be.
No, I mean, the program, what you're talking about, program, a program for a budget program, which includes the entire financing. What you're asking for right now.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'll talk to Rich about that tomorrow.
And I have one more question about fundraising. At the top on the program revenue, there's listed fundraising E and C at $5,000, but then down below, I was at the legal questions about being able to fundraise. Is that why there's no fundraising at all? I always understood that we would try to go after outside sources of revenue so that we didn't have to rely continuously on TIF funds or city funds, which are, you know, much more scarce than they were.
Well, a couple of things that happened last, last year were that Christina left when we were just getting ready to launch a fundraising effort. And it was decided that we really needed to wait until the new person was in place before we could go forward with it. And then there are some legal questions that are still being discussed that don't allow us to necessarily start out with it immediately.
This is the foundation that was talked about earlier in this meeting, that if we had had a separate foundation, that the arts could be part of that.
Sure.
Yes, Jim Simon.
There are a few ways you can engage in fundraising. It really depends on how it's done. To send staff out and conduct fundraisers dinners or whatever, that, that becomes questionable. But certainly on the website, if carefully done, there can be an indication that the city will generally, just a broad general fact statement, that the city does or will accept funds if somebody or businesses or what have you wish to make a donation, as long as they're not pressured to do that. Obviously, you have to look and see if they have any business in process with the city, whether it be fines, fees, or applications. And then you can then structure, if you want restricted gifts, let's say, if you want to donate, you can donate to the city. If you want to restrict your gift, meaning that the funds are to be used for a certain thing, maybe it'd be a sculpture, or maybe public arts generally, or, you know, Boneyard Creek Development, there can be click-ons and donations can be made that way. It's more informational as opposed to active, what I would say, you know, pounding on doors.
Right. That's kind of what we had originally thought, we were going to do an online fundraising.
It's really how it's presented. It's information made available as, as opposed to direct solicitation. And generally, donations to municipalities are tax deductible. But you probably should have a statement to the effect that the donor should consult with their tax advisor as to the deductibility.
Okay.
One last question?
Yes.
The transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund of $15,000, is that earmarked for the Boneyard Park art? Or the, the things that have already been approved?
Tom Carino.
The, the $15,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund is basically for programming that is not within the TIF. That is, again, a small amount of unrestricted funds that aren't, don't have to be expended within the TIF. So if we have a arts grant project that does not fall within TIF, then that 15, the portion of that 15,000 goes towards funding that program that's outside the TIF. So that is unrestricted funding for programs that happen in the city outside of the TIF.
But it's not for the Boneyard particularly? That, the Boneyard includes in its own budget, the arts part?
The, at, at one point early in the program, when we first introduced, when we first introduced the sculpture program, we had sculptures on Philo Road. Those sculptures were funded by the 15,000 coming from Capital Improvement, again, because those sculptures could not be funded by TIF. So again, the, the 15,000 from Capital Improvement funds art programming that's not within TIF districts. And that could include sculptures, it could include public arts grants. It, it has, it was not specific to Boneyard, though.
Okay, but it's the idea that the presence of the art does add to the value of the property. And it's a good thing for business, and it, that was the whole idea, the discussion when we did the Public Arts Commission, was that this was an economic development tool as well as being something that's good in itself. That other communities have, have seen the wisdom of that, including, I think it was Covington, Kentucky, was a real classic example, where they built a whole industry around having artists come and live there.
Paducah, Kentucky.
And we're, Paducah, Kentucky, okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the program plan.
Okay, motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe. So this is the program, and the budget will be included when we vote on the budget. Yes, Diane.
Is this then set in stone?
Nothing is set in stone. But you do have to, I mean, part of the ordinance is that you have to approve the program every year. But I'm just pointing out that the budget itself is, is part of the budget process.
Okay.
And we'll address your issue of where, should we have everything in one place and show it as a program budget? That's our method of budgeting.
Which, and that's one thing I don't understand, is why we're considering some things outside the context of our entire budget discussion.
That is the ordinance that established the Public Arts Commission, that every year they would draw up their work program and it would be approved by the city council.
Separate from the budget.
Well, I mean, it's into, it's part of the budget, that's what they're going to do, but the actual funding of it comes separately when you vote on the entire budget. We don't do piecemeal, you're going to look at it in the context of the total.
I just see this budget as being different from, you know, a lot of challenges this year that we haven't faced in the past, and which, and as much, and I, and I'm not, you know, I'm not attacking public art, I am just cautious about committing to one thing before we've seen the entire budget and looking at what the choices are.
Well, you can always go back. You can always go back. If, if there's some shortage of funding, we can't, we might have to cut something or find some other source of funding. But the program was, approval was spelled out in the ordinance that created the Public Arts Program.
Boy, maybe we need to reschedule that.
We can do that, but that'd be kind of hard to do tonight. Dennis.
Yeah, and you know, there are certain, certain projects that I'd love to see develop further that haven't really come through from the Arts Commission. And I'm wondering, you know, I mean, these are, these are arts related, and I'm trying to figure out like how, how those interests can be added to and supported if they're not, they don't appear in this particular proposal, or, you know, if they're not being budgeted, and yet they might be of great value and use to the city. So, I mean, what would be, I mean, what I, what I don't see is how the, how the city council can somehow, I don't know, support concepts, art concepts unless they're adopted by, you know, the commission itself.
Um, Eric.
So, so I think maybe the answer to that, you guys can see if you agree with what I'm saying, is that any member of the council, and indeed any member of the community, can, can come and, you know, can ask to be put on the agenda of the Arts Commission and, and come and say, you know, I think, I really think you guys should do such and such. And, and it'll be considered. So, the Arts Commission is, is, I love what the Arts Commission does, but it's remarkably reactive. I mean, most of the budget comes from the, from the, most of the ideas for how to spend the money emerge from the, from the creative arts community in Urbana. We, we don't go out to, the commission doesn't go out, I don't, I'm sure Lisa doesn't, go out to the creative arts community and say, you know, give us this, give us this arts program in the school, or give us this, you know, particular poetry event or whatever. People come to the Arts Commission, and the agenda is largely shaped by what comes from the creative community. So I think, I think, I think the idea is just to come to the Arts Commission and, and say what you would like to see the Arts Commission do.
Libby.
And we had some great public input a few years back. It might be time to reach out again more broadly. I know the Arts Commission does get a lot of input and ideas. Just to try to respond to Diane and Dennis, in the draft budget, I believe it is all in one location. I'd have to look and see again, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's separated out, and I'm sure that we can make any adjustments. Dennis had mentioned trying to reach other youth, and we didn't talk a lot about what we did with King School, but it was very extensive and very significant. And I don't know if, how many were able to come to the final assembly, but it was really amazing, you know, the music and the performance, and I think we had a huge impact on King School. And there was no reason that through our school, Art in the School program, we couldn't go to Prairie, for example, or some of the other schools. And I know that you've been very interested in the Folk and Roots Festival and growing that. In fact, it's in the council goals. And that is something that is budgeted, will be budgeted separately, and Lisa would be the administrator to work with that group. So that's an initiative. So when, hopefully in the budget, we'll be able to identify all these different programs. So just thought I'd mention those few items.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I very much would like to see us do more with Art in the Schools. I would like to see us do more programs in more schools. And the other thing I'd like to say is, just, I think we have been using the grants because it's been such a great way to get a lot of things out of, I know it doesn't seem like little money to you, but it, when it comes to doing big art projects, this has been a way where we can really get the most out of the money that you've given us. And we felt like this has been an effective way to do it, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Eric.
But I would just reiterate that we, we really do need to get a foundation framework so that we can solicit funds in an unfettered way. I was, Naomi and I were yesterday in Chicago at the annual fundraiser for Chicago House, and, annual fundraiser and fashion show. And this was, Chicago House has focused on, especially on serving HIV-positive community. And they're doing serious stuff, really serious stuff, but it was so much fun. And, and that's what loosens people's wallets.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting so long. I believe there's no further business, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.